Their statutes which went into effect on April twenty eighth, I'm sorry, August twenty eighth. It requires that any entity with twenty employees or more have to provide one week of, well, twenty to forty-nine have to provide one week of unpaid leave for those that are victims of sexual harassment or violence. If you're over forty-nine, then it's two weeks unpaid. So we have now dropped below that twenty level, and I didn't know if the board wanted us to look at adopting at least the minimum that they have for the twenty to forty-nine in our personnel policy and provide that. So there are certain specifications that are on the backside of your board memo. This is what, if you're in the other classification, you have to hand that piece of paper out to your employees by next, no, by two weeks from yesterday, by the twenty-seventh. So didn't know if you wanted to have us add that into it. We can talk about it later, but something to think about.
Yeah.
Vern Bowman Contracting will not be paving tomorrow. Looks like rains in the forecast again. They'll be starting up probably on Monday. ARPA reporting deadlines for the first year have been extended. They were supposed to report at the end of October. We wouldn't have been able to tell them much, so I think it was smart they moved it to April of next year. And finally, November and December's coming, so what do we want to do about our meeting schedule? The first meeting in November is actually on Veterans Day, so if you want to move that meeting to the next week, which would put it on the eighteenth, then it would just be in the middle of the month. We wouldn't have one the next week, which would be Thanksgiving. And then in December, last year, I think December, we met the first, first Thursday, our first regular meeting, the second Thursday, and then we said if there's something we need to do, then we'd have it on that Monday before Christmas, unless you want to have it on the twenty-third.
No.
Yeah, for some reason.
Probably not.
Nobody, it doesn't seem to. So I'm, you know, looking for a voice vote on what you would prefer to do so we can establish our meeting schedule for November and December.
You anticipate any issues to have two meetings?
I don't anticipate a lot of things that are going to happen, so.
Don't want to anticipate.
You know, I don't, I don't think we have anything that would require two meetings, but if so, then we'll ask for a special meeting to discuss whatever it is and get that taken care of.
I think it'd be good to move that meeting to November eighteenth, though.
Yeah.
That way, if there is something that comes up before that or after that, you can cover it in that meeting.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to move our first meeting in November to the eighteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
What do you want to do about December?
Just leave it, I think we just leave it as is, and if we need to have an emergency meeting, we can, we can always do that.
Just have the first meeting and?
Yeah, just have the first meeting, yeah. Unless you want to move that meeting.
No.
I think we just leave that just like it is.
So you definitely want to skip the second meeting of the month?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would, I would say you need a vote on that.
I need a motion to, so we don't, we're not going to have the second meeting in the month of?
November or?
Of November or December.
I make a motion to that effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
That's all I've got, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you. Takes us to our staff reports. Chief Steyer?
Good evening, everyone. You should have my report in front. Not a lot going on right now. It's kind of our slow period for change. Probably the biggest thing is we did get our turnout year in that we took six months to get it, and when it came in, we had a few issues with it, so I contacted the supplier, and they're going to remedy the issues. They'll be warranty work, so we'll have as good a year as it should be. Opened any questions?
Kenny, we've talked about trying to retain some of our firefighters and some type of program or incentive. Looking for ideas or anything?
I'm in the process of trying to do a big survey of several surrounding counties. Though with full-time job and everything, it's hard to find a time. What I did recently is made a couple of phone calls and had some samples from like Farmington, Perryville, and Bontaire, a couple of cities around us, of what they're doing. For the most part, the ones that are paying people are basically making them like part-time employees for the time they are being called in and paying them an hourly rate or a flat rate for the calls. There are still some, many agencies that don't give anything for the volunteers, but a few of them are. Probably the one that surprised me the most was Perryville. I kind of mentioned that one time prior, that they're actually paying forty dollars for a call and forty dollars for training, which is kind of what we're doing with our firefighters' compensation that we do. We get, have three hundred and sixty dollars, and basically tie that to the training. If they can make the trainings, then we give them the three hundred and sixty dollars. So we're kind of doing that. Nobody in St. Janey County pays for any responses of any kind. Unfortunately, volunteerism is just down nationwide on everything, and fire service just takes a big hit because about seventy-five to eighty percent of the firefighters in the nation are all volunteers.
What's, what's the average call time? If you leave your house and you want to call, how long are you there?
Majority of them are an hour or less, because most, most of our calls, honestly, are either assisting EMS with moving a stretcher or something like that, or fire alarms that we can check out in a half hour and be done.
Then how many, how many people on a call?
It varies day to day. We had a fire alarm down at Community Center, or the Interpretor's Center the other day. We had three guys show up, and that was because it was right around the seven o'clock shift change, so I got guys going in and guys coming out, so it's in transition.
I mean, I would imagine it takes at least three guys to get your stuff to the scene?
It takes, it'd take more than that. If we get everything to the scene that we should have, we should probably have six or seven guys at least, and that would get the trucks there.
So considering a normal house fire, you need six guys and?
A normal house fire, ISO wants you to have eighteen to twenty guys on a scene. And our average house fire or average structure fire in the city with the guys we have, we're averaging thirteen maybe on a good day. And then we also have, like we started a while back, the Autobahn Mutual Aid, so I'm bringing in a couple of trucks from neighboring departments, and they'll bring in two or three guys, too. So we're, we're getting close to that eighteen that they like to have, but most of the time we don't have that, like ISO would like to have. And realistically, after forty-five minutes on the scene, the first guys in are beat down, and then you need a break anyhow, so we're still going to be short, even if we have the eighteen or twenty guys.
So in these two hundred to two hundred and forty calls per year, how many of those are you shorthanded on?
Probably the majority of them. We're running, last time I checked, we were running about eighty EMS assists a year, and the rest of them are all fire-related of some kind, where wires, fire alarms, or whatever. EMS, one or two guys is plenty, but when you start talking about alarm soundings or fire alarms, or wires down. A good example is St. Jan Public School. We went up there a couple of times this past month or so for fire alarms, and I have to send guys different directions to check out different parts of the building, so a team of two this way, a team of two that way, plus me, is five guys already, and we haven't even checked out the majority of the building.
So scattered out, you don't cover?
Yeah, gotta cover it all. And like I said, I intend to do a more thorough survey when I get time to sit down and actually put it together, but this will just make a few phone calls around the neighboring departments around us, city-wise.
But even these departments who pay are having trouble keeping staff, or do they feel like this is helping?
It's, it's helping. Perryville says they're actually having really good luck with theirs. Farmington, it's kind of hit and miss because they're a combination department. They have some full-time and some part-time, so they're really doing okay with the full-time people they've got, and the volunteers are part-time or only to supplement what they've got. And St. Francis County is a different animal, too, because they have so many fire departments, and they're only two or three miles apart, that whenever they get a call, they bring in two or three other departments, and they're getting eight or ten guys from the other departments, too. We're, we're eight or ten miles away from our closest department, and we are the biggest one, so if we can't get them, what are we going to get from the outlined departments, too?
But we're furnishing people, too, to the outlined departments on mutual aid calls, too?
Yeah, they have structure fires. We're booked in to help the neighboring departments, too.
Right.
And that was a coordinated thing, where they're helping us, we help them. That's the only way we can survive nowadays, is volunteers.
Right. So if you, you know, call in mutual aid and we come up with some type of incentive, we have to incentivize those people also?
No, that's just part of our agreement.
Part of it?
Yeah. It's just like if, certain things that we do, fuel for our trucks and things like that, we don't charge the outlined departments because they're going to do the same thing for us, they're going to spend fuel coming in, so.
I mean, any idea, you know, as far as like a total number that would be workable with, you know, the guys or?
Not off the top of my head.
Right.
And like I've mentioned before, two guys, the ones that we have there now, majority of them don't do it for the pay. They're doing it because of the service. It's the people that, we're trying to get the new people in, and those kind of come and go. We had a recent application. I went through the background check, and everything was looking good. He even had certification. And a couple of days later, our local PD had a run-in with him, and then I had to make a phone call, and we actually turned down that application because of some other issues. We had another guy signed up, and he's been on for about nine months and hasn't shown up for a single thing, so he's getting ready to get released. And I think we're doing everything we can as far as recruiting. The Herald's always helped us out, we appreciate that. We've got the website, we've got the Facebook site. Robinson Signs is actually giving us some space when they have it on the big billboard, so.
Yeah, that's made enough.
I don't know how much more we can do from our side as far as recruiting.
Do we know what, what the line of would be in the budget if we, if we elected to do some kind of a monetary incentive? Where would that money be pulled from? Do we know?
It'd be salaries and wages or a stipend.
It'd be a general fund, too.
Yeah. Do we know if we elected to do that, would, would we be obligated to do anything else? Like, would we basically be taking them on as employees, so would we be obligated to do other things?
Same as the board, we are, we pay taxes on the board. I don't know. I don't believe we did in other cities that we, that we would have volunteers out, we would just pay a flat amount each time they were called out.
And that's what you've got in other cities?
As best as we have done.
I mean, they're contractors, basically, at that point.
Yeah. But we'll have to check, I mean, I, rules may have changed.
Okay.
So when do we insure these guys? When the tone comes out that, you know, they're traveling in their vehicles to the firehouse, or how do we?
The insurance, the way I understand it, because I questioned that before, too, is that the time the tone goes off, our insurance starts covering them. Because there was some question about if I'm taking my personal vehicle to the firehouse and get involved in an accident, who's covered? And that's part of the reason why we use staff vehicles now for mutual aid calls. We used to use like my personal vehicle, and that vehicle's being commandeered at that time for fire department use. There was some discussion about what insurance covers it, so this makes it a lot more cut and dry.
Mark, do you have any, and you work with some other cities, and what they do or?
Well, I mean, it varies. I mean, just like you, if you have any information on what other cities do, I wouldn't dispute everything you said.
Any other questions? Can you run up chief?
Thanks. Thank you.
My report there, see, unfortunately, I forgot to change September to October, but it is the October report. On the Historic Preservation Heritage Commission, we did not have an October meeting. The next meeting will be November fifteenth, and at the meeting on the twenty-eighth, you'll hopefully see a couple of resolutions. You can see we pre-applied for two Historic Preservation Fund grants. We budgeted fifteen thousand. It will still be right around that amount, but it'll be for two different grants, one for planning and outreach and one for National Register Survey. So those resolutions, I received pre-approval on those grants, but now we have to finalize the grant application, so I will need approval from you all. That'll be on the agenda on the twenty-eighth, just so that you know. Down under Planning and Zoning, we had a meeting last week where a couple of things were recommended to the board. Those will be coming to you at the twenty-eighth meeting or later. We'll have a Board of Adjustment meeting as soon as it can be scheduled. Having a little problem gathering a quorum, so I don't know if we'll be looking for some new members or not, but if you have any ideas, please let me know, or if anybody out there listening would like to join, please call City Hall. That's about it, except for what you see there on my report, unless anybody has any questions. Yes, sir.
Dave, on those ICC codes, I mean, it's always customary to be behind a few years.
Um, customary, I would say a lot of smaller communities are. It gives, like the 2021 codes, some time to be judged, looked at, amended if need be, so that's why we're looking at 2018. And 2018, in conversation with the folks who, like work with Kenny to set insurance rates, 2018 will bring us up to where we need to be to maintain our level of rating.
Are you aware of anybody that's done the 2021 yet?
Larger cities.
Right, but nobody around us.
Not that I'm aware of. Most, most are on 2015 or newer, and we're on 2012, which is why we need to come forward. All right, thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Things on the agenda, the COVID discussion.
So our numbers last, last couple of weeks, if you go last, last two weeks, the average daily amount is three or four. Our metric was ten, so we've been down below that for probably the last three or four weeks. So the question is, do we leave masks on? The school has decided to make them optional prior to us making it mandatory for those that are visiting City Hall and other city offices. We made it mandatory. We can go back to optional, we, you know, we'll just put the signs up recommending that people wear masks, but we're not, we can, you know, we don't have to require it. CDC still has the same guidelines out there that I've, that we have before, so it just depends on your comfort, comfort level in allowing masks to be taken off.
I'd prefer to do that, make it optional.
I don't have a problem wearing a mask, it's not that big a deal. I mean, what, what's our in-house employees, you know, that are here every day? How do they feel?
Most of them prefer not to wear a mask. We will put them on when people come and visit, and nobody's, you know, complained about that, but I don't think anybody likes wearing a mask any more than the general public does, but they're willing to follow the rules.
But I mean, you don't have them wearing masks all day in here, just when somebody comes in, yeah.
We're spread out enough that I don't have concerns with spreading the disease.
I'm off and making it optional.
I think so.
So we make it optional now, we can make it optional tomorrow morning? We can, what do you all?
We're all masked up now, I guess we can wait until tomorrow morning.
That's what we did last time, we put it, put it into effect at eight o'clock in the morning, so.
Yeah.
It gives me time to change the, the.
Yeah, new sign.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any committee reports?
Everybody turns and looks at me because I've got something to say.
You know your stuff.
Just a few things on the park. So over the summer, we sent out some RFQ for fundraising to help us with the master park plan. We did have one company, agency submit for that, so that's being, on Tuesday, that was reviewed by members of our fundraising committee, and they're going to talk about it with the full board, the full park board, coming up, I guess, at our October twenty-fifth meeting, and then we'll decide whether to move it forward to the Board of Alderman. Basically, it's just professional help fundraising and consulting. You know, this board's pretty green with those, that area. You know, aside from organizing a car wash or bake sale or something like that, you know, we, we need something bigger to attack, the tacticals on this, on this master plan, so a professional company could potentially help us with that. So possibly expect something in the, in the future from that. But other than that, park board meeting on Monday, October twenty-fifth, and then on October thirtieth, the last Saturday, we have our last scheduled movie in the park for this year. It's going to be Hocus Pocus, and we're also going to combine that with our annual Pumpkin Glow pumpkin carving event. So hoping to have a cool afternoon and evening up at the park for that day. Other than that, that's all I've got.
How many of your numbers, that's your one last movie?
Oh, Wizard of Oz did pretty well. So I had Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse, we saw about fifty people, parents and kids. Wizard of Oz, we saw about seventy-five or so. Made about fifty dollars off of concessions, which we put into our fundraising community foundation fund.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Murray?
From, from the long disbanded Building Committee, I hope, hope to represent those people. What's our process, and we're going to talk about that later in the agenda, but the QA sign-off process for the money that we're paying, this is a general question, like somebody's going to do a walkthrough and to see if quality is where we want it to be for, okay, and who, who is that going to be?
That's myself and the chief.
There you go. Okay. I'm good.
There you go. Anybody else? There you go. Takes us to public comments. Anybody have public comments?
Good evening, guys and gals. Claudia Stupi, I'm here as the resident of Ward Two. I wanted to revisit the water issue that was brought up at last month's meeting. I know you had some visitors talk about some water issues out, out on the other side of town, but in Ward Two, we, we had a lot of flooding on August twenty-third as well, the worst that we've ever seen, or I know some of us have ever seen. And, you know, it's, a couple of times in the past year, the water has gotten pretty high. It's concerning, really. And so I guess a couple of points that I'd like to bring up. One is, in the short term, can the board address, are the ditches being regularly checked and cleaned out, debris? I know my dad used to check ditches and used to, you know, in our, in our little area of the neighborhood, he would pull stuff out that was, he knew was going to clog up a pipe, you know, so I don't know, is the street department regularly going through and, and doing, you know, those, to me, those are kind of easy things that could be done all the time after storms. So that, that's one, I guess, question I have for the board. The, the second thing I want to ask about is, does the city plan to do some kind of long-term study? You know, are, are you serious about that? Is there money in the budget? Are you looking at an engineer? I guess where, where do things stand with that? Because I know there was some talk about that, so. Those are two, two questions that I have to the board, if, if you could address that.
Who can answer that?
Well, you know, we, we had talked about that, you know, because we have it, you know, the, you know. It's always been questionable with the ditches because it goes through private property and cleaning them up, but it's a, it's, it needs to be, especially where we have pipes going underneath people's house, in, in their yards, you know, so that's, that's a valid question. But, you know, and I know we do some of it, but not all of it, but we kind of leave it up to the homeowner, but not every homeowner's going to be responsible to clean the ditch outs that's in front of their yard. So, but that's something, you know, something we have to talk to, or that'd be our street employees doing that, you know, so.
You know, one thing, Paul, I was down there that day. I didn't get out on the other end of town and stuff. I had a couple of my own issues and stuff, but I did notice a couple of things down there, and I kind of talked to Claudia about it a little bit, but, you know, there's a pretty good dip in Market Street right there. If you really sit back and look at it, I mean, there's just actually three issues there to me and stuff, and not picking on any one particular area and stuff, but, you know, Market Street has a definite dip there, you know, short of tearing up the whole street and increasing that culvert underneath there, which would be pretty expensive. I think there's a couple of easy fixes I'd like to have some discussion over, as one is raising Market Street in a dip there, a couple hundred feet and maybe about ten inches or so, because there wasn't a whole lot more water than that going across Market Street. Might have got a little deeper than that there, but, you know, we kind of dammed that water up in the ditch over there. The second thing is on down the creek a little bit more. There's a pretty good turn in that creek down there, and then there's a culvert under a driveway. It appeared to me, and of course I'm no expert and stuff, that there was some water being held back there, it seemed like, but I didn't get out and walk all around there and stuff, but I know some of the neighbors are here, and I'd, I'd just like to hear everybody's input of what they think could be done to help the whole situation, but, you know, short of tearing up Market Street, which long-term, you know, probably needs to be done, that culvert box under there makes a turn and changes its size, and it's not made to handle, you know, but I've seen it a few times there, recently come across there and stuff, and some of it is debris and stuff that comes down through there. I know right now there's a piece of insulation laying there in the ditch and stuff, but, but I don't know, I mean, I, to me, there's, you know, more than one issue there and stuff, and I'd just like to see if everybody else feels that way, and if there's something we could do, because, you know, it's just a bad situation there and stuff, and it does that, and it's going to continue to do it.
Well, Bob, I respect the assessment.
I'm sorry, this is not on the agenda. This is public comment.
Yeah.
So you have a work session that covers that topic, but, you know, this is not on the agenda for, for discussion or action, the water issues. So, I mean, it's a public comments, and I, I know we always want to give a response to public comments, but public comments are for the public to make their comments and for us to receive the information. And, and, and so I would just advise you to listen to her if you want to give a brief response to questions, obviously, it's a great thing to do.
Yeah, and we are going to talk a little bit about it on, in the work session, with a different problem, and, you know, so, yeah, I think it's something that, you know, and what, what, what we do is, is long-term. I don't think anybody is looking at anything long-term, and it's about times we do, so that's something that, you know, the board will have to get together and look at, so I agree with, with Mark, you know, so appreciate that, Claudia. Anything else?
Yeah, just a quick comment, you know, on August twenty-third, water was over Market Street at Ninth. You know, on August 23rd, water was over Market Street at Ninth Street. To me, that's a problem, so...
Yes.
And not that we always get rain like that, but, you know, that is a problem, so...
Yes.
And there are some neighbors here, too, that I'm not sure if they want to get up and talk, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura.
How y'all doing? My name's Rick Figgy. I live in South Gavery, all the way at the end. So, and I apologize about the mask. I wear it all day long. I figure I get back in my hometown. Sorry about that. Anyhow, so, I get this water, and I knew 17 years ago when I bought this property that I would probably be getting some water at some time. And before I bought it, I went down there two or three different times on a hard rain. And I looked at the area, and I'm like, because I love where it was, one way in, one way out. Some of you may know where I'm at, some of you may not. And it really never did come over the banks. And I'm like, you know what? I can live with this. So, what my question is, I get it coming along railroad tracks and then off of Market. So, I've got it all funneling right there, right? And I've been watching this for years. And in the last six, seven years, this water has been more. Is there anything upstream, downstream, is why we are getting more water? And I'm going to show you some pictures here, and these are just a few, but I don't know up around 61, have they done anything different? Is something getting channeled more? I'm going to tell you, six, seven years ago, that stormwater drainage, it would dry up. I haven't seen it dry in a long time. There's always at least a foot of water sitting in there, which is really bad on mosquitoes, and I did bring this up on another occasion. But if you guys would like to look... Oops. If you guys would like to look at these. This is kind of what we are dealing with. And again, the debris that is coming down there right now, and I haven't got to it, I haven't had time. I've got so many swimming pools stuck in a tree down there. So, there is a lot of stuff that just comes down, and it gets channeled two ways. And Happy, thank you very much, whenever I had you down there to look at the bridge, because the bridge was washing out. This is our only way in, and you had somebody come down there and repack those rocks. That made me feel better. But now that my daughter lives right there, we got two grandkids. It's a safety issue, I think. How would we get an ambulance or something back in there if Murphy's Law, if it would happen? And if you could see what I got there, there's no way in. And I can't be reliable on saying, hey, neighbor, I got to use your yard to get over here, and somebody's got a problem, if you understand what I'm saying. So... But, and again, I got to stress, it just seems like the water is a lot more... I've been watching it for years, is a lot more than what it used to be, and I don't know where it's coming from. Or is it not getting away? I don't know. That's somebody to tell me, or some engineer or whatever. Is something blocking it to where it can't get away? Or is it being funneled in from some other way and being rerouted to where we're getting more? Because I get, like I said, I get it two ways, and it's a lot, so... And that's just a few pictures, but I... Again, I apologize. I didn't know I was going to do this until last night, so I'm kind of unprepared. I'm just here, so...
Any other comments? Board has been well made aware of it. We've all lived through it, and I can't imagine that living through a flood is not very pleasant.
Well, it does not get in my house, and it's only been in my shop one time. The safety issue is what I'm looking at. We cannot, we can't get out, we can't get in. If there was an ambulance that had to get in, grandkids, I don't care about myself, but if somebody else had to get in there, it just can't happen, so... Anyhow, that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Uh, yeah, if you don't need them, I can take them back.
I've been down, I know exactly what he's talking about.
Okay, my name's Ron Klein. I live in Warrior Place, along the same stormwater runoff that we've been talking about here. So, everything has been presented, diddle for me as well. I've been living there since 1981, been hanging around there since about 1976, '77. It's my wife's home place, and we bought it and moved in in '81. Since then, to the best of my knowledge, I agree with Rick, the increase in water flow has been significant. I think there's only been one upgrade in any culvert along that, I'd say from Mississippi Lions Truck Company on down past Rick, and that was my driveway. That culvert used to be smaller, had a corner in it, and did it restrict things? It absolutely did. And we put a new culvert in, and I think it's the largest one in that span that I just talked about, and it still may not be large enough. Bottom line is, I agree, Mayor, I think we need a long-term solution, need a professional group to take a look at things, and... But, as Bob said, some intermediate measure to at least help would be very much, if that could be considered, would be very much appreciated. So, yep, that's all I have. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, thank you all very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Let me work there now. First and the second, the consent agenda. Have a load on that? Yep. Aye. On favor?
Aye.
She knows by now, right?
Very good. It takes us to old business. Second reading of Bill Number 4454, an ordinance repealing and replacing Section 600.020. License required, classes of license?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prentz?
Yes.
Alderwoman Onderster?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one accent. Bill number 4454 now becomes ordinance 4374.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill Number 4455, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing a payment to Donzy Construction Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the remodel of the city police department and basement in the amount of $149,694.42. Reimprove.
I'll second that.
Call on favor?
Aye. Motion for a second reading?
I'll second that.
On favor of that?
Aye.
The second reading of Bill Number 4455, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing a payment to Donzy Construction Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the remodel of the city police department and basement in the amount of $149,694.42. Reimprove.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Onderster?
Yes.
Alderman Prentz?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one accent. Bill number 4455 now becomes ordinance 4375.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business? Okay, if there's no other business, I will call this meeting adjourned. We'll start a work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's all yours, Happy. Just so you know.
I was trying to figure out what you were asking.
Item two on the agenda was to do, talking about shoes, water issue. However, both Steve and Terry had family things to take care of tonight. All agreed at sports, so they were not able to make it. I told them, you know, I just got back from vacation, I'm establishing that we can talk about it. If we can't make it, that's fine. We won't hold any prejudices against that. We'll bring it up at the next meeting, so we won't have item two. Item one is just clarification from the last meeting about Dave Schatz and his subway restaurant and strip mall that's adjacent to the dips that we maintain. We take care of the grass cutting. If you'll... And we finally found the agreement, because there's always that rumored, the city signed an agreement. He brought it by. It was unsigned, but it looked official, and then, so we knew what to look for. So, we looked through the right files, and Pam found it, said, here it is, has all the signatures. But the item to look at in that agreement is item seven, which says the property owners are responsible for the signs. The only thing we're responsible for is to keep it open as a stormwater ditch. So, we really aren't responsible for maintaining or doing anything with the side of that where it has eroded into their property and it becomes their issue. Now, if you want us to watch over that process, or if there's something you want us to do, we make sure that it doesn't, whatever repair they make, doesn't squeeze it, you know, reduce the amount of area that's open for water flow. But technically, we really don't do anything with that.
Does DNR have any say-so over that?
Not really.
Because it's not a natural creek, or...
It's not a listed creek. It's not, it's just a, it's a waterway, it's a city ditch.
Yeah. I think we made it pretty clear with, for him to make the repair that he needs to make. The way I understood it last week, I believe that's what I told him, is that he's responsible for making that repair. But we do need to make sure that the repair does not impede the flow of the water going through the ditch. So, that's a little bit tricky, but it's doable.
What gives us that authority to do that?
Well, in just looking at this agreement, it's in there, the agreement that that can't happen, the way I read it.
So, when you were talking about vegetation, I mean, if there's weeds growing up in there, wouldn't that be under our normal vegetation guidelines?
That's what we're doing, cut. I mean, we're doing that three times a year, cutting down whatever vegetation is in that ditch.
Right now, it needs to be cut. There's a lot of vegetation on the upper end of that ditch, like what by the night there's...
Right. We won't do anything until November. We're going to do one final cut.
Sure, and I understand that. That's a good plan.
So, what's on the table tonight is, do we continue to do what we've always done? Or do we, at our expense, or do we do more, or do we do less?
One thing was clarification as to what our responsibility is. We do not know where the property line is either. We don't, we aren't surveyors. I don't know where his property line starts and where Point Base, because we don't own any of that. We don't have it.
Now, that agreement is with Point Base. Point Base, that's no longer owned by Point Base.
No, but it is with whoever their heirs or assigns are. So, but I don't know if that property line runs in the middle of that ditch, off to the west. You know, we're... All we know is that we're supposed to maintain to keep it clear, and probably mostly from vegetation, or to keep it clear as long as we use it as a ditch. If we reroute it somewhere else, then we are not responsible for it. Then it goes, it reverts back to what the homeowners want to do, or the property owners want to do.
You have a rough idea on what we spend on riprap and maintenance and labor and just wag?
I mean, we, I think they filled it once from the subway side. I don't think we've done anything with, from my...
I mean, it can't be more than a couple thousand dollars.
There's nothing that I remember being done in the last five years, you know? Other than cleaning the ditch, doing the weeding.
Right, right. So, we'll make sure that the rocks don't get into the opening that goes under.
Yeah, that's my big concern, you know? Somebody dumps riprap over the side of it to protect the property, it don't spill out, make a dam. To make it worse, we got to... And we have that agreement in there, the city, number two, that will maintain it to the free flow of water. You know, that would be, if somebody's rocket's in there or whatever, it's got to be cleaned out, so we need to have a...
Didn't Mark though tell us he felt we were, we had no authority to go in there and mow that?
We do with this.
Yeah, that was before they found them.
Before we found this, so we have the authority to take care of that, so...
Well, and I think number two, and as well as number six, make it pretty clear that they, they can't do anything that's going to affect...
Yeah.
Right.
How it drains.
Right.
And that's key, because we have a drainage problem right now.
Right.
We don't want to make it worse.
But we don't have an agreement with the neighbor.
So, we don't have it with the subway lot. It's just with Point Base that we can get in there. They allow us access, take care of it. And their property runs, I think I put a copy of that, it runs from 32 to 61.
Well, what about that little house that runs alongside there for quite a ways?
Again, unless we have an agreement, we don't have any agreement with anybody except Point Base, so the Point Base...
Do you want to look into making an agreement with everybody, or leave a sleeping dog lie? I don't know why we would need to get agreements with them, as long as we're maintaining what's in the flow.
Okay, I'm okay with that, too, yeah.
But if we agree to maintain, we're in no way accepting any other liability as far as damage.
Not according to the way I read this agreement. We're just making sure that it flows, that there's no weeds, and which we do, we cut the weeds out.
Yeah, that stuff we're building's kind of sitting there precariously on a...
Yeah.
And I think, Joe, you told me we did put that rock there.
Yeah. Well, somebody built a, like, a little flood wall on the corner, and I don't know how long that's been in there, for my time. It was like, you could see a corner, and I'm sure they put that for the water to hit it and go around that, their property, but there is, like, up in the middle of that ditch is a flood wall. And I'm sure it's probably whoever owns the subway looks to me like they done that.
Well, there's kind of a creek there right there.
I know, but there's a, like I said, it looks to me like the wall's there to, so it don't just hit right to the building, it converts it over to the ditch channel. Well, we got an agreement to keep the ditch out. We've been cleaning that, we've been doing that, you know, so...
And I asked him to be here tonight, and again, that was earlier this week, so, or then, hell, it may have been two weeks ago, but he may have forgotten to be here to discuss it. But I also drew his attention to various items that were included in that, and said, I don't think it's our responsibility, but we're going to come talk to the board and discuss it further. Again, he may be busy with family stuff tonight, too.
Well, that's the problem you have with all these ditches. It's the ditches over here on Market Street, they go through private property. It's really the property owner's responsibility to clean and make sure the ditch is cleaned out. Well, it doesn't affect them, you don't worry about it, and you get a rain, well, the trees come down the line and they cause problems. So, on the other hand, it's not a bad idea for us to, especially right here, have our street department take a look at ditches and make sure if we can pull a log out of there that's going to save us some aggravation, that's a whole lot cheaper than... Because that's exactly what happened up here, too. The debris, the ditch got choked up, and it come out on the road, and it went right down the road and naturally right off into the...
Yeah. So, I can see a major issue with, if you start getting things on people's private property, and we start going on that, we're going to be, are we going to be responsible for every tree that falls on everybody's property, just in case it could get clogged in the system? We definitely maintain anything that has, that's an inlet on the street or crosses under the street. That is always our responsibility, but outside of that, we have to be careful that we're not getting our private property doing something for them that we wouldn't do for...
Well, they could get sent a letter, just like they do for any other property violation, couldn't they?
Yeah.
And the whole thing responsible for it.
I don't know if down trees are a violation.
This is a problem happened here. The water, it come through the woods, the branches come through the woods, and it got hung up on the culvert. Well, it was somebody else's branches that ended up, and then we cleaned it out.
And that was Gamberry Creek, right?
Now, it's over here, you know, the ditch line that runs, well, it runs from the lime plant all the way down through, and then you catch Ninth Street, all that water comes around, boom, it hits there, and that's the problem there, and the water coming down Ninth Street.
But it's crossing underneath the city street, so we should, we should clean that.
Well, no, it's not where it dammed up. There's two ditches over here, and they go through people's yards. It comes down and it goes underneath a driveway, in the yard, in the...
It comes down and it goes underneath a driveway, in the yard, in the, I mean, it's not on the street, it's in the yard. So, that's something we gotta maintain.
Right, and Paul earlier, I apologize for bringing that up in the public comments, but I wanna reiterate them now that we're talking about them, you know, and it, it's so emotionally charged, you know, when people get water in their homes, and it's damage to them and stuff, and, uh, I just wanna reiterate my comments from earlier and stuff. We need to do something there on Market Street. And I was glad Ronnie was here, because you and I, we've looked at it down there. There's a turn in the creek that needs to help straighten it out, but, I just think there's some things we could.
Is that Ronnie's property now that he bought that front lot?
Well, the, the caution I have is that we're playing a shell game, and I'm not, I'm not feeling qualified to say, hey, if we do this to this street, then that's gonna fix it, or whatever.
No, but I think.
We gotta find, we gotta find money to come up with a plan.
Right, I, I agree with you, Mike, and stuff. I just, I know Ronnie's willing to work at a solution down there to help everybody out and stuff, and we just need to, we need to do our part.
And then when you, when you get it, when you get that corrected, you got.
I don't disagree.
He's gonna get the water. It's gonna end up in somebody's yard, and.
We don't own all our infrastructure.
And that's the problem, you know, we're living by the creek like that. It's just, it's a challenge. And they know, and they're, they're absolutely right. If you look at their, just look at the record of this big river in the last six years. We've had more floods in the last six years on this river, and, and I'll tell you what, with climate change, nobody wants to talk about that, but it's gonna happen more and more. It's gonna be, uh, it's an issue, because the, the climate is changing. And whether we like to admit it or not, things are different. We've been around, everybody's been around long enough to see that the weather has changed. It's, it's different. We're getting more rain when our rains come. They're real heavy at times, and then, then we go through a big dry spell. You know, we didn't have a flood last year, but now, all the models are looking like this year. Everything that I'm looking at with, because I work on the river, is that, yeah, we're running for a big snow up north. We're, we could have problems in the spring of the year here. Small correction, we did have a flood last year, but that was also the tornado that we had. Yes. And that was on July twenty-third.
Happy, is there someplace we can turn to? I mean, uh, you know, listen to some of these people, you know, they don't wanna leave these things alive. Is there somebody we can turn to, an engineer, an expert, to get some kind of idea of what these surveys would cost to find out a master plan? You know, that we have, at least do something in some direction.
What's our new street department head say about that?
I can, uh, I can speak to our company, see if there's anyone in there that's stormwater savvy.
That'd be excellent. So, even that, you could still, you could talk to Cochran. Cochran knows all about water sewer.
I mean, every town has these issues and stuff. I would think there's gotta be, you know, at least we could find out, is this a fifty thousand dollar thing to get a study? Is it a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar thing? Somewhere where we can at least let the people know that we're, we're trying something.
That's the first step, is to, to make some plans to do it. We're, we're, we might not be around long enough to see it happen, but there has to be some bullet points and things, some goals to reach. Yeah, you know, that, that in the next ten, fifteen years, it's, because it's gonna get worse, and there's gonna be more flooding.
Uh, I'm just gonna say, kind of, to Bob's thing, a, a study might not solve our problems, but it help, would help us identify where our biggest problem areas are, and where they fall on our responsibility. Because, you know, if we're dealing with, you know, the Figgy situation, or a Market Street situation, and then maybe some of that might be our responsibility or, or not. But then, somebody in my neighborhood called me, and, well, you took care of that. And that, having a study and really identifying those, um, major problem areas and the overall flow. Like, you guys have kinda talked to me about the directions that the storm runner, water runs off in my neighborhood, but I still can't follow it. You know? Because it, I'm, I'm a visual person with that kind of thing, so I wanna see a map, and I wanna see an arrow with the direction of, of the water flow. Because you guys telling me, and then I can't reiterate that to my constituents, because I can't follow it without really in-person tracking it or on a map. So, doing some kind of study like that, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be costly, and it's gonna be time-consuming, so this isn't a quick solution, but it's something that I think we need to start really moving toward, um, especially if future boards, you know, are gonna be left with this to solve, or not solve, I guess. You know, the, the problems are just gonna get worse with generations that haven't been around whenever certain things were put in place, or decisions were made, um, so.
Well, my other question, too, is, is this board willing to, first of all, commit to seeking out what it's gonna cost? And then, when it, when we find out it's gonna cost a lot of money, are we gonna, do we wanna, are we gonna spend the money to do it?
Well, let's find out the number.
Find out the number.
Let's find out the number and, and get a, it might be a ten-year plan, it might be a twenty-year plan, but, you know, that we have to do phases or, or not, but.
That's the whole bottom line of all of this, is it, it's gonna cost money, and we don't have a lot of it. And, and those are just the facts of it, so.
Well, that's why I said it, want to know if it's gonna be fifty thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand, but, you know, you talked about passing this water on down. One of our properties, we had a situation years ago, and it was a core of engineered, monitored, small, I mean, it's no bigger than some of these, but the core of engineers monitored that branch. We had to hire an engineer, and that engineer took just our property into consideration, and told us what we had to do, and we had to do it. It didn't make any difference what went on down the line, you know, uh, it was strictly on our property and stuff. And, and, you know, the real problem was a street, uh, Middle Street right down from us has these little bitty culvert pipes under it, and, you know, but they didn't go down through there and tell them, you had to tear up yours, or you had to do yours. We had a tree in the creek, and that's what was causing the problem, and we had to spend money to find out how big, how wide, how deep, and we did it, and that was the end of it. But, um.
It's, it's, our biggest problem is more headwater. It's not, it's not that it's now on, 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 out in Mike's neighborhood, it's where the water's going, and it can't get into the hole fast enough. But this water coming in this area, it's not getting jammed up here. It's, and it's not, even down there, there's plenty of, when we have a big rain, that field, they got, if you talk to the, come to a levy board meeting, the amount of water that they can just take into that field out there is incredible. You know, so this is just, this is headwater. This is just heavy rain, and it's coming everywhere. And you've been on Ninth Street, and if you've been on Ninth Street with one of them two-inch rains, it's incredible. The amount of water that goes, boom, and it, it comes down. You got Mississippi Lime up here, they put a new parking lot in for their trucking company up there now. So, all that wooded area that collected, so, well, all that water now, it's, it's coming down here, so.
I haven't been back there, but supposedly there is.
It's big.
It is fixed?
Yeah.
But detention?
No.
You're saying, no, it's big.
Well, it's big, but supposedly, there's plans for a detention basin, but I.
Well, that's what, that's the only thing that can help this situation, is, is even on Ninth Street, back in here somewhere, and I don't know who owns the property, but to put a, a pond in, to, to catch some of it, but even then, when you have a three or four, or five-inch rain, it hits it and goes over, and you're not slowing anything, but you can, you can slow it down a little bit. Yeah.
I think Mississippi Lime owns that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they own that.
Yeah, that house, that big house up there.
Right, all hers off, and stuff.
Yeah, right. Anything else, Happy? What are you gonna do now?
Going back to you.
Going to dinner? Are we talking back to you or not?
No.
Not without them here, I think.
We're not going to?
No.
No, they're not.
They're gonna make it tonight.
So, who do, who do we look into this, you know, the, the engineers, you look at?
So, you ask Cochran if they do it themselves, or if they can recommend a.
Steve, you're gonna talk to a lot.
He'll check a lot.
Yeah. There you go.
We'll see if they find, find a company that does it.
Okay.
They didn't, could have probably, some of the, what, rough cost of what engineering would be.
Is there, uh, anything else to take care of?
I do not have anything else.
There's anybody that got anything else? Joe, don't, you go over there, I'm not done. Bobby, you got something for me?
Something else and stuff.
Is it on the agenda? Is it on our working session agenda? Has it got to do anything with our agenda? Yep.
No.
We can't talk about it. You're gonna have to answer another meeting, so.
Okay.
It's not on our agenda, so.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?